Uncle?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here.
Mr. Camisher?
Here.
Mrs. Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Dr. Wagley?
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will need an approval for an exempt session. An executive session.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session.
Motion by Mr. Camisher, second by, uh, Mr. Camisher to move that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. Will Cobble please, Ms. Damon?
Mrs. Conkle?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Camisher?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guest seat. We'd like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item. Now would be your opportunity to do so. I ask that you just come up to the podium here, state your name, your capacity within the district, and you will get three minutes to address the board on a non-agenda related item. Because it is a non-agenda related item, we will not be able to comment it, but we will hear what you have to say.
My name is Tim Beck. Board members, many times the board and the school administration have stressed that they need and encourage parents to be involved. Recently, a parent expressed a concern with the age appropriateness of a book in the PV library. Board policy governs the process by which the concern is addressed. As a parent and citizen, I would hope that the concern would be addressed in a simple, fair, and equitable manner. The perception is, it was not. Mr. Zimmer was assigned to oversee this process. Mr. Zimmer allowed both the complainant and the school representative up to ten minutes to make their comments. In most hearing situations, a fair process allows for one side to present their arguments, and then after the initial arguments are presented, the other side presents their arguments. Then discussion follows, addressing the comments presented by each side. During the book review meeting, the complainant made her comments, then there was discussion about those comments, and then at the very end, after hearing all the comments, the school representative was given ten minutes to present her comments. No time given to reply to those comments. The perception is, this was not an equitable or fair process. Preferential treatment was afforded to the school representative. From our viewpoint, the issue of the age appropriateness of a book is more a parental decision. Therefore, we feel that parents should be represented fairly on the committee. We feel that at least half the committee members should be parents. This is not what happened. It is not a surprise to us that selected, those selected from the school would vote with the school representative. In another instance, Mr. Zimmer stated, "You may be aware, requests to ban books from school and public libraries has increased tenfold this year, with merit many hearings devolving into screaming matches and threats against committee members." This statement has no place being stated. This statement is prejudicial and creates a biased perception. In addition, at no time did any of us who commented on that book that was not age appropriate, did we ever use the word to ban the book. Mr. Zimmer stated the board policy, and the board policy dictates that the review committee is subject to the state of Iowa Open Meeting Law. The meeting, the board meetings are conducted in accordance with the Iowa Open Meetings Law. Is this Mr. Zimmer referring to a different law? The Book Review Committee did not follow the Open Meetings Law. Number one, the law dictates that meetings to be open as open as possible. As the board is aware, a meeting following the open meeting ruling cannot go into closed session without a valid reason. None was given at the book review meeting.
Mr. Beck, your three minutes is up.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes is up. Is there anybody else who wants to address the board on a non-agenda item?
Hello, I'm Paul Corolla, parent in PV. I was at the hearing and just want to say in response, I really appreciated how the process went. I thought it was fair and equitable. I thought everyone had a chance to speak. And just the comment about not mentioning, to mention that it was there an increase in public hearings or an increase across the country. My understanding is the only reason the complaint knew about the case was hearing about it in other districts, that it wasn't due to an interaction with home, family, or child. So I think it was relevant that this has increased across the country. In fact, that's the reason why this occurred. I fully support how the hearing went, and just to provide another perspective, thought it was fair. I was appreciative that everyone got a chance to speak, and that until the very end, it remained civil and respectful, and I appreciate the board and the committee. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to address the board on a non-agenda item?
Yes, hi, my name is Anna Marie Gania, and I have an issue with the CNN tenant classroom. And I brought this up to more than one person, a principal and Ms. Cindy, and nothing has been done. First of all, my son is sixth grade, and from the research I've done, CNN ten, it's PG thirteen. So I really encourage you folks to really look at what's presented in that, because I spent half of the day having to talk politics with my son because he sees him in my classroom. My understanding is that we're not supposed to talk politics in school. I need some help in here with this issue. Why are we watching CNN on classrooms? Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to address the board on a non-agenda item? Moving on to board members, Ms. Anderson?
I have nothing.
Ms. Ayers? Hoskins?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Connor and a thank you to her. She's an eighth grade teacher, language arts at the junior high. She put, helped coordinate a wonderful production of High School Musical Junior that was unique this time because it was performed at the high school. And the students did a phenomenal job under her leadership. She was really encouraging to all of them. They really bonded as a group, so it was really great to see. And also, I just wanted to recognize Harper Clark, who is a senior at the high school, and she did all the choreography for the show. And I just thought how phenomenal it was for a high school student to kind of have that role and responsibility to teach the junior high students, and that they responded to that and did well. And it was a meaningful volunteer experience for her as well, so I just wanted to congratulate them.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Brockman?
I would just like to thank the community, the parents, the administration, as well as the students for a successful prom. This past week, it kicked off with a fun assembly and ended with a dance, and everything went well. Our community supported an after-prom party, which a lot of students attended, so I must have been involved with that.
And it was at TBK again this year for a second year, correct?
Yeah, correct.
And that went well?
It did.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Ms. Camisher?
I'll keep my comments short since I saw it's on the agenda, but congratulations to the teams that went out to the Iowa State IT Olympics. I'm looking forward to hearing about that this evening. I'm particularly excited because I'm a cybersecurity professional, and so happy to see us really performing well.
We'll wait up, we'll wait on you, Mr. Zimmer. Dr. Lewis?
I also have a recognition, I'll just wait for my turn.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
I have nothing.
Ms. Damon?
Yes, there's an updated personnel agenda.
Okay.
And we have another university listed for student teaching agreements.
Okay. Great, wonderful. Mr. Strus?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, well, we'll start with you, Dr. Lewis.
Well, I am very proud to be able to introduce to you today Finn Barclay, who is a student at Pleasant View. He's here with his parents, we're gonna let Finn introduce his parents in just a minute, and he's here with his teacher, Ms. Rebecca Van Blercombe. Finn is, I'm just gonna read here so I don't get this wrong. Finn was selected as the state winner of, for the stock market game, which is an invest right essay competition. He was the state winner and then also selected as an eighth place finalist nationally for fourth and fifth grade competitors. So Finn, why don't you and Ms. Van Blercombe stand, and we would like to recognize you. You can even come up to the podium here if you would. And maybe you would start, Finn, by introducing your parents who are here.
Hi, everyone. This is my dad, Marty Barclay, and my mom, Brianna. This is my ELP teacher, who's Van Blercombe. The SIFMA Foundation is a non-profit organization committed to helping students learn about the global capital markets and the importance of saving and investing. Through the SIFMA Foundation Stock Market Game, students throughout the nation work in teams to invest a virtual $100,000 in common stocks, bonds, mutual funds, and ETFs. Researching stocks and bonds and mutual funds for an investment portfolio for the stock market is pretty impressive, but writing an invest right essay related to the learning in the stock market game is doubly impressive. The SIFMA Foundation Invest Right Competition challenges fourth through twelfth grade students to analyze an investment scenario and recommend portfolio allocations targeting short and long-term financial goals. The competition serves as a culminating activity each year for those who compete in the stock market game. The competition is stiff. During the fall semester, almost 5,000 students wrote essays. Of these, 810 were written by fourth and fifth graders in the middle school division of the competition. Every year, almost 6,000 experts in the financial industry serve as judges to score the essays. Last fall, students across the country were challenged to describe an investment portfolio of stocks, bonds, and mutual funds in sectors destined to transform the future, from technology to medicine to transportation and beyond. Students conducted research and contemplated their future lives to determine how industries would evolve and produce new jobs and careers, and how they would invest in this growth. They wrote how stocks, bonds, or mutual funds could be combined to create a successful diversified portfolio within these new horizons. And Finn won some pretty impressive awards. Not only did he win this very large trophy. He has a medal as an invest right winner. And probably the most exciting for him are the money. You won $100 for being a national finalist, and you won $50 from the state. So congratulations on all of your accomplishments. You wrote a really good essay. Do you want to put it back in there?
So Finn, everyone wants to invest your $100.
You have plans? Um, I already invested it. Thank you for your time.
Do you want to share a little bit about your experience? Like, what about it was fun and surprising, maybe?
I think that I really learned from writing this, and that it has motivated me to invest some of my own money. And I thought that it was a fun experience playing the stock market game, because I thought it would be an accurate example of the real stock market. We won, we lost, we cried a little, and we celebrated a little, too, right?
What was, what was the hardest part?
I think that the hardest part was... Maybe the time, I think we had 20 days to write, edit, and do everything out for this paper. But I think I, I had to kind of rush at the end to fit everything in.
What got you interested in doing this?
Um, I think it was required.
Has this experience, um, made you think that you may want to consider doing this in the future?
Yes.
Yes.
I think my dad has showed me some investments that he has invested in, and that they have been proven winners to, like, average a good amount of money each year. And I think that I will do this when I'm younger and older, because it's, the stock market usually, you usually gain money off of it. But...
Well, come hit me up when you become a fan of soccer.
And congratulations, and these are skills that will definitely last you for a lifetime, so we're very proud of you for taking this challenge on and looking at this and sharing this with us tonight. Again, we're very proud of your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. And we have another recognition, I think this one, Mr. Zimmer is going to do.
Yeah, Mr. Orlando and the three will do next. I want to make sure we get the kids here, so I apologize for that. We do have some other recognitions that we're trying to keep up with now, it's a busy, busy time of year. So on April 28th, the Iowa High School Music Association had the solo and ensemble festival. And PV vocalist performed 76 entries, with 34 receiving a Division One Superior rating, and Leah Mendelin was selected outstanding performance in the center for vocal solo. Band, the Pleasant Valley Band, earned 38 Division Ones Superior ratings. And also, congratulations to Harper Clark for the euphonium, Erica Holberg for the trumpet, Catherine Moore for the flute, and the Wind Symphony Woodwind Choir for receiving Best of Center awards for the day. The band took four out of the five Best of Center awards for the day from all participating schools, so that was pretty good. And then lastly, orchestra, Elena Moore received a Division One for her cello solo. And along with continuing the theme of business, the Future Business Leaders of America, who's FBLA, the advisor is Ms. Janine Murphy. On Saturday, April 1st, she had 15 students compete at the State Leadership Conference, and 14 of those students placed high enough to move on to the National Leadership Conference competitions this summer in Chicago. So we're working on all the arrangements for that. The listing I sent to you, I want to just highlight a couple of the first place. Securities Investments was Nathan Musel, who you can partner with our young person there. And then on UX Design, which is a process of creating evidence-based interactive designs between human users and products and websites, Vignay Joshi received first place for that. On the Objective Test and Presentation Performance, the Business Plan, receiving first place was Marvin Robic and Jasmine Thompson as a team. And then in Website Design, Soler Chima received first place also in that. Soler also won first place in the HTML CSS competition, but it has no national advancement, so she missed that. So, over a few of the things that were going on in the month of April. And as soon as I get the large group band competition from this weekend, I'll hear that at the next.
Thank you very much. Um, all right. So moving on, I will need a, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? Then I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Conkle to approve the, this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, approval of bills. I will take general fund.
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $205,648.71 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition Fund?
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $192,497.27 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman, that the nutrition fund warrant be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary Junior Activity Fund?
I move that elementary junior activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $11,189.68 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? High School Activity Fund?
I move that the... Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $41,124.61 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Camisher, second by Ms. Brockman, that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pepper Fund?
I move that the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $62,828.11 in payment of invoices presented.
Sir. Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Camisher, that the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund?
I move that Internal Service Fund warrants 6369 through 6372 be issued in the total amount of $54,776.26 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the Internal Service Fund warrants 6369 to 6372 be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Trust Fund?
I move that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $11,771.26 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson, that the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, old business, and it's old business is to talk about the third reading and approval of board policy series 300. And we went through that, this packet, some recommendations for changes, and we're here to look at those and then to approve this for everybody, and said it's, like...
So going through, one of the first questions that was brought up last time was board policy 301.6, which is succession of authority, and 302.1, which was the administrative positions. And we thought that in 302.1, we should put bullet points or number the positions, but really, the board policy before talks about the succession, and the next one just talks about the positions in general. So if we look at the one before, it covers that sequence.
Yeah.
It fits the sequence. Under 302.4E, which there's 12 of those, Director Camisher had given us a number of things like the tenses and so forth, so we worded all those the same. That we made all those corrections this time, so we have those taken care of. There was also 302.6, which had to do with administrative professional development, and should there be a unique experience in travel that would be out of the norm? It had in there that it would take school board approval. We changed it to just be school board president. So in other words, if I feel it's different than we normally would do, I could just talk to Dr. Wagley in this case, or any other board president, and say, would you approve these expenses? They're just unique, but we believe it's the best for professional development for our administrators. So we made that change as state board president versus the whole board, and that kind of summarizes for the most part the changes that we had since the last time we met. So as Dr. Wagley stated, this will be the third reading. If we approve this tonight, then Ms. Damon will work with getting those posted as well. So 100 series is now updated, two would be updated, 100 is updated, and three would be the next one.
Does board have any questions regarding those changes? And when they went through it again, did they see anything else that they wanted to have addressed? Seeing none, then I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the additions and revisions to board policy series 300 as presented.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board approve the additions and revisions to board policy series 300 as presented. Will Cobble please, Ms. Damon?
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Camisher? Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes. On order of new business, we're gonna, we need some recommendations to accept the 2022-2023 food service bids. Corey Gamble, our new nutrition coordinator, thank you.
Hi. Thanks for having me. I'm Corey Gamble, the Food Service Director, and I have tonight the bread, milk, pizza, beverage, and distributor bids for next year. And I don't have a lot of changes, but I thought I would go ahead and tell you about them a little bit. So I sent out bread bids for, they were sent out on March 25th and opened on April 21st, and sent to Panagold and Bimbo Bakeries. I only received one back from Panagold, which is our current vendor, and so I'm gonna go ahead and recommend that as our vendor for next year. The bid was just a little bit higher, but I think because everything is just a little bit higher, we're gonna be paying that a little bit for, you'll see that everywhere, grocery stores, anywhere right now. So I think that we just kind of have to go ahead and have them as our vendor next year. And for milk, I sent invitations for bids to Anderson Erickson, who's our vendor currently, Prairie Farms, and NDSM Holding, Dean Milk. Those were sent on March 17th and opened on April 26th. And Anderson Erickson and Prairie Farms both submitted bids. NDSM Holding, Dean Milk, did decline to bid due to distribution capabilities. Anderson Erickson, who's our current, who's our current vendor, was the lowest bid overall by $2,655. So I would like to recommend that they be our vendor for next year. And pizza bids, invitations were sent out on March 17th and opened on April 22nd to Little Caesar's, Happy Joe's, and Papa John's. They were all returned and with the lowest bid of $7 per pizza and the highest bid of $9.99 per pizza. And those are all vendors that we have this year, and of course, the kids... And of course, the kids all love them so much. And so I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we have them all next year as well. They're doing a fabulous job. And again, the lowest price is just a little bit higher than this year, but again, I think it's just because everything is a little bit higher, ingredients-wise. The beverage bid, I sent out, three beverage bids invitations on March twenty-first, and they were open on April, April eighteenth. They were sent to Pepsi, Coca-Cola, and Dr. Pepper Snapple Group. The only bid that was submitted for the opening on April eighteenth was from Pepsi. I did receive a bid from Coca-Cola, but it was the next day, so it was, it was late. So that bid was invalid. So I would like to recommend Pepsi as our vendor for next year. And so for our distributor, we have been successfully operating under the agreement and guidance through the AEA purchasing since September of this school year. And I feel that it's really improved our inventory and purchasing. And we've done really good things with having them as our purchasing consultants. And I feel like, I would like to recommend that we sign that agreement again for next year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So for the bread bid, it was higher than last year, so what, like, what are the percentages we're talking about from year to year, especially given the way the current situation is from an inflation standpoint?
It is, it is about double next year than it was this year, the bread bid.
Okay. How about the, you think the milk bid was much different?
The milk bid?
Compared to last year?
Compared to last-
AE last year too?
The milk bid compared to last year is not, not much higher. But it is just a little bit lower than Prairie Farms. But it is not a lot higher than last year's.
And then with the beverage bid with Pepsi, was there any change? I believe we had Pepsi last year too.
We did have Pepsi. We have had Coca, Pepsi in past years, and we do have Coca-Cola currently.
Okay.
The reason that we did decide to send invitations out for bids this year was because when I was talking with my supervisors at the high school and the junior high, not that they're unhappy with Coca-Cola at the time, but it's taking quite a lot of manpower to, to do unpackaging. The Coca-Cola products are coming in with a lot of plastic, and it's taking the ladies a lot of time to undo the plastic. They're doing it before serving and in between serving, and it's just taking them a lot of time. I talked with Coca-Cola and I insured him that we would send out bids again next year. He said he was gonna work on that. We're not unhappy with them. I just would really like to try to see if we can see if Pepsi, helpful with Pepsi, so.
Any other questions?
Have you found that, I think last year we were having like supply issues, have you found that those kind of have worked themselves out?
It has gotten a lot better, but we're starting to see now that the school year is getting, we're getting towards the end of the school year. It's starting to get a little bit that way again. So we're, we're going to have to start making some menu changes, I think, as the year kind of dwindles. But I think that, I think that we've got kind of that under control a little bit. We do have to use up some inventory anyways, so I think that that is actually kind of a good thing. So, we'll be able to use up the inventory and get, get our freezers and coolers and pantries kind of cleared out, so.
Just make sure you have a pizza day, 'cause I hear about that all.
Yes, I am so excited to be able to put Little Caesar's back on the elementary menu this month. And we'll definitely do pizza days next year for elementaries and obviously for the other schools too. And then we're also throwing in a Chick-fil-A day at the high school. So I'm gonna hopefully make those kids really happy too, so.
How are the decisions, I was curious about the mold? Is that made at the school level based on the event, or is like, does each school have one brand of pizza that they?
So I just, what I've been doing, and I kind of took from Andrea's suggestion, is to, because we have such high numbers, is to kind of alternate each week, or every other week, when the, each restaurant or vendor does like, say, the junior high or the high school. Because the counts are so high, we don't want to overload each vendor with numbers and counts for pizza delivery.
Any other questions? If not, I will need to take each of these separately as a motion. So if somebody wants to start off, that would be wonderful.
I move the Board to accept the bread products bid submitted by Pan O'Gold Company for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Conklin, that the Board accept the bread products bid submitted by Pan O'Gold Company for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Camerer?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskins?
Yes.
I'll take the next motion, the milk?
I move the Board accept the low-milk products bid submitted by Anderson Erickson for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Camerer, that the Board accept the low-milk products bid submitted by Anderson Erickson for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Camerer?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskins?
Yes.
Yes. One for the pizza bid?
I move the Board accept the low pizza bid submitted by Little Caesar's, Happy Joe's, and Papa John's for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the Board accept the low pizza bid submitted by Little Caesar's, Happy Joe's, and Papa John's for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Camerer?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskins?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes. And then the beverage?
I move, I move the Board award Pepsi the beverage bid for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the Board award Pepsi the beverage bid for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Camerer?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskins?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes. And finally, the AEA purchasing agreement?
I move the Board accept the recommendation that the AEA purchasing agreement be extended through the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Camerer, second by Mr. Ayers, that the Board accept the recommendation that the AEA purchasing agreement be extended through the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Ms. Damon?
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Camerer?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskins?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Before we move on, I just want to publicly thank Corey for all she's done to step in this school year halfway through, it's been greatly appreciated. We haven't missed a beat in what we do, that's because of her guidance. So again, Corey, thank you for all you've done this year.
Thank you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three can roll with update, Mr. Struce?
So tonight, I'm kind of really gonna go through two things as we look at wrapping up the twenty-two, twenty, or twenty-one, twenty-two school year, looking at kindergarten registration coming up. We, on March first, we had open enrollment that officially closed in that regard. We have not approved those, we're gonna talk about that tonight. And just a good online verification, verification of where we are. Just want to give you some tentative numbers and decisions we may have to make yet between now and the start of next school year. So, Beth has pulled up on the screen, and what I've actually do, Beth, if you would scroll down to line twenty-six, that'd be greatly appreciated. And kind of want to walk you through where we are right now without open enrollment figured in across the district. So when you look at, I'll give you an example. If you look up there at line J, so you can just slide over just a little bit to second grade, line J and thirty-five, or column J thirty-five, you'll see there's a five down there right now. So what that means in second grade, you can see we have four hundred and fifty-one students right now that are registered for second grade. We have a capacity of four hundred and fifty-six, which means we have five seats available right now in second grade. And if you go across that, now if you go back to, you can keep it right there, you can still see it. In the very first column there, D, you'll see a number twenty-five currently at kindergarten right now. We have twenty-five seats that are open. Those are the two where we're the tightest across the district right now with seats. And I'll just give you, you don't have to scroll, but in first grade, we have sixty-four available, third grade fifty-one, fourth grade fifty-six, fifth grade thirty, and sixth grade thirty-six. So when we look at seats, remember, we have class sizes that we try to keep at the twenty-two, the twenty-four, and the twenty-five, respectively at the various grades. We watch these numbers very closely. You know, what we try to do is we try to keep it, everybody, you know, as long as we are, if we hit twenty-four, for example, and that's our max, it's third grade, we may say, we may bump to twenty-five, but then we do that equally across the district. So we keep bumping up by one in the classroom until we, you know, fill up again at that point. So those are things we have to watch very closely. Like I said, we have to focus on second grade and kindergarten here tonight. Before we get on to the next section, any questions just on seat capacity, where we're at available-wise at this time?
How many current first graders are open enrolled that could possibly, 'cause we would look at not being able to enroll them next year? Or they, because they're here already, they, we just wouldn't accept new ones?
Ex, so exactly correct. Once a student open-rolls to us, they stay with us. Yes, unless they resend their own open enrollment, otherwise they are with us. Great question.
So if kindergarten's that tight, do you have a look at what's coming, right, kindergarten second are super tight, then you have to wonder what's, what would be the next kindergarten?
Yep. So let's go ahead and look at the next section down, and we'll come back to your question, 'cause we'll look long-term also. So right now, this is open enrollment, and that's perfect, stay right where you are there, Beth. Because what you can see there in the second line from the top, you can see the various, where we're at right now of capacity. So if you look at second grade, and you look where the five is in that second row in J, and go down, do you see a minus two? We currently have seven open enrolled requests that have come to us since before March first. So we have not approved them yet, and that would be a question mark right now. If we were to approve all seven, we'd be at a minus two at second grade. If you look on the screen up there, you'd also see in kindergarten, which again was line D, there's twenty-five currently open spots. There are fifteen open enrollment requests for kindergarten at this time. So that would put us down to ten open seats across the district there. If you would slightly, if you look at the next grade level, first grade, you can see sixty-four to sixty-one. So we currently have three open enrollment requests. If you just want to kind of slide over, we can see the other grades there. Beth, thank you. So in the gray box, you see we have fifty-one down to forty-three. That would be third grade requests, so there's eight. Again, we're still in a good spot there. Fifty-six down to fifty-four in fourth grade, so we have two requests outstanding. And fifth grade, we have four open spots from thirty down to twenty-six. And then sixth grade, we have three requests, thirty-six down to thirty-three. And just so you know, at seventh grade, we have seven requests for open enrollment. Eighth grade, four. Ninth grade, six. Tenth grade, three. Eleventh grade, two. And I think I just heard you say there was a twelfth grade, one potentially, coming in as well. So, again, the biggest numbers, again, that are most impactful to us would be that kindergarten and the second grade, as to what we have to look at and what we do. In those options. So, let me stop there and just ask about questions there you have before we look at, what does this mean?
How long have we had twenty-four as sort of the standard?
Oh boy. As long as I can remember. Yeah. If you look down, down below, you can actually see the spreadsheet here, so it's what you see in capacity. But if you'd scroll down, Beth, in that next box, you can see where we're at across the district. Kindergarten's twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-four, and twenty-four for first through third, and then fourth grade, twenty-five through twenty-five. So what does this mean for us? When you look at what we do, we always ask ourselves, and I'll just take second grade, whether we accept open enrollment or not, having only, I think it was five slots left in that right now, you know, what would typically happen is we would just deny the open enrollment. You know, we have five slots, as they come in the rest of the school year, over the summer or throughout the course of next year, we just, instead of adding a teacher, you just start adding one per class throughout the district. That is not uncommon. Similarly, we have done that before at kindergarten, as we've been increasing. The other option besides adding one per grade level is you have to ask yourself, do you add a teacher? And you know, if you're closer to that higher limit, you might add another teacher into their classroom, which we do have space available. You know, we have a couple rooms at Bridgeview that would, possibilities, and we'd also have a couple at Forest Grove right now, 'cause you know, it's kindergarten classrooms. When we built it, we had four classrooms, we're only using two. So you have some space to do that. But with these numbers where we're at right now and the way they're spread across the district, we would not be looking to add a teacher per se necessarily at this time. So we gotta look at what are our options. Now, not to say we couldn't come to the start of the school year, but those are things we have to watch in these numbers, 'cause they're tight. This is where we are.
So when you say that, like at second grade, where we have the five seats available right now, you're saying we wouldn't take any open enroll and leave those spots for people in the district, 'cause they're gonna move in and stress that out, right?
So, that's a good question. So if you take five right now, and let's just say you add one across the district, that's gonna gain us, that would gain you nineteen spots, okay? So let's say you did take on the seven open enrolled students, which puts you at minus two. Say, everything just stays the way it is from now to school starting. That would leave you with seven open seat, or seventeen open seats across the district. The question, that's adding one. What you just never know is how many kids we have coming in between now, start of the school year, throughout the year. Or how many do you still have that decide to move, or, you know, those sort of things happen. So it's always kind of a guessing game. So those are questions we have to keep watching here over the next few weeks.
Like?
We have nineteen sections in every single grade level next year. So if you add one per classroom, you're picking up nineteen seats.
Do you have a deadline that you have to answer the input?
We tend to say the, yeah, the end of May is what we try to live by. You know, the other question we're having right now, if you could scroll up, Beth, to that open enrollment section and look at kindergarten, right there is great. The other thing I would share with you right now, you look at kindergarten, the first line, which is actually Bridgeview, at fifty, capacity's forty-four. We have a minus six available right now. So we started to have those conversations at kindergarten with some Bridgeview families as we watched this between now and May twenty-seventh. Remember, the rules we follow would be, if they have a sibling in another grade already, they would have preference to stay at Bridgeview with their sibling. We also look at walk zone, who are the students in the walk zone of Bridgeview? They'd be that second tier. And the third tier would be, is there busing capabilities that we've used? So in the past, an example would be, take Joan Rose Court area by the fire station. Or another good example would be Cody's Hunt. When you look at Cody's Hunt, we have a number of students who might live in that area, in that subdivision. Some go to Cody, some go to Bridgeview. The reason being, we have a bus that runs on Holland. Sometimes we've run through Cody's Hunt, and we'll pick up students there and take them to Cody. Sometimes we're looking along the river, if they can pick up along the river and then go up territorial to Cody. So we try to look at where are the families that we could say, okay, of those six, potentially go to Cody? How that happens is, let's say a family says, yep, I'll go to Cody for kindergarten. They're put on a waiting list that Debbie tracks very closely. Should an opening come, we would call them mid-year and say, hey, we have an opening back at Bridge, would you like that option? Sometimes families will say, yes, we'll take it right away, or no, let's wait. Because in kindergarten, the first grade, at Bridgeview, for example, you pick up four more slots because of the twenty-two to twenty-four in a two-section building. So some families say, we'll just wait until we get to that point, and we make that decision then. So, there's a lot of factors that play out in that decision when working with families about what does next year look like in kindergarten. Now, should we say in kindergarten, you know- Now, should we say in kindergarten, you know, we feel like we want to take on those fifteen open enrollments? Which puts us down to twenty-five, down to ten open slots if we did that, and we said for a year as we continue to grow. Do we add one student per section, you know, that opens up a couple there as well, that is an option that we will watch.
When it comes to open enrollment, they're only specifying our district, right, they're not saying I specifically wanna open enroll at Pleasantville, for example.
Many will share with Debbie their preference of where they would like to go, um, and we just cannot guarantee them that. So Debbie will tell them that, and it really comes down to what our capabilities are. For example, you take, um, oh, you could take Forest Grove right now kindergarten, we have zero open slots there. Or if you go a couple grades later, you would see, take second grade, if you wanna slide over to second grade, Beth, there are three schools that are already. You have a zero, zero and two negative ones, cuz we're just trying to make decisions there. But if someone were open enrolling, their only options would be to go to Bridgeview or the last one there, which is alphabetically Riverdale Heights. Would be that one there, so those, and, and we'll see some families might say, hey, they're, they're coming to us from Davenport, your opening school is gonna be Cody. At that point, they may say, we just can't make that happen, so you lose that open enrollment, or they decide not to.
They may not be offer it, they may change their mind at that point.
Yeah, and so right now, we have not made those calls, so again, Debbie, I make those calls to open enrollment, people may decide, we don't wanna accept it. Those are all the factors that we have playing into this.
Past, uh, the, the, the new open enrollment sort of with, with the new law that was passed, I've seen more of it, is there any, is it not a trend or it's really hard to say? Like what we're, how much we would expect this to change between now and let's say August?
So between now and August, there should not be any open enrollment happening, cuz March first was the deadline. So that special legislative guidance from the last year ended on March first, this la- this last March first. So everybody applying had to hit that mark. Now, with that said, you will continue to see open enrollments throughout the year. Because there are certain times when a district may reach out to us and say, with superintendent's agreement, it's best for that child to come to our district. Or one of ours go to a different district, so you will see open enrollments throughout the year, just not at the pace as you would see. At June first, we make that decision, cuz we have so many that we're making the decision on.
Any other questions from the?
So let me go before that we close this, um, if you could, let's see, Beth, if you could go to the top section. And then scroll back to the beginning, just wanna, right there's perfect. Just show you some things that sometimes shift your mind and make you say, what is going on? Um, if you look at D, and it is D, the blue levers where it's four fifty-eight. You know, you look at our second grade when we're at five open seats right now, you look at our first grade numbers up there, it is three hundred and ninety-two, I think, correct? Three ninety-three, so we started this school year at three hundred and ninety-three students, right now, we have four hundred and fifty-eight second graders. So that was just the number of kids moving into our district between the start of the year and what we're anticipating we'll have next year. Um, now that does include those few open enrollment, those seven students. But Debbie would always come and say, Brian, there's another first grader that's here, there's another first grader, and it just always seemed to be first grade. Um, so we grew, you know, right around that sixty-five or so students from the start of this year to next year, which is just unbelievable. So that's why you see that number being so low, most of the other grade levels have thirty to forty open seats. So if you would scroll down just a little bit further, Beth, to the next section down, here's the other interesting fact, right there's great. You can see where that first column in column B, you can see where our numbers are, the total in the red, the fifty-two seventy-nine. And you can see where we're predicting right now, if we accepted all open enrollment in column D. If you go down where it says twenty-two to twenty-three increase, that would be potentially two hundred and fifty-one new students next year. If we continue on this path right now as to where we are, where typically we're in the one hundreds. Um, now this year, opening Forest Grove, we knew we'd be high, we were one seventy-nine, does that sound right about? I think was where we were, so that was high, we anticipated next year being high, just like Hopewell was, the second year was open. So we will see where this is trending and what the impact is. And if Beth slides over to this, this is near the ever famous crystal ball, trying to figure out where we're going. Um, so we've put in those new numbers in that, in column H up there, we've added what the enrollment could be for next year. We've added in what our typical predictions are for classes, and if you see that nine twenty in blue. That is blue because that's the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that is when the junior high is set to be open. So we're still sitting good there because the capacity number was just over nine hundred, is like our max number of where we wanna be. The other two blues, you see the two reds next to it. The red was where we thought we'd have to open up Forest Grove's two other sections to make it a four-section building. And the other one is where we had, thought we'd have to start adding on towers at the high school. So with these predictions of numbers right now, that's actually moved that a year sooner on those two predictions. So we'll continue to watch that, Forest Grove is one that I think it'll be opened even before that, we'll have to bump that to the other two sections before. That timeframe there, but we'll watch that, the good news is from a floor plan design system, we can pretty much call our architects. And they can pretty much be ready to start adding on, cuz the blueprint's there, or that, so the timeline is just gonna be. The schematics and then the product and so forth, but these are things that we have to continue to watch long term, um, moving forward, where we go.
And the high school is just adding on more towers, right?
So there's two things, yes, we can add three more towers on the front, the other thing we've talked about that Mike could be a proponent for would be. Science classrooms take a lot of space because you have the classroom plus the lab. Um, do we add additional science classrooms on the back of the school, I'll call it the southwest corner? It's probably the best off the parking lot, and bring it towards the football stadium and have a couple layers, two stories of just science classrooms. Because when you put more science classrooms in the towers, you start eating up less classroom space. So that is something we'll have to weigh out, is maybe you do that addition, and then another tower, we have to look at how all that plays out.
So is that coming off like the band room that comes off the back, or it's over more to the?
Uh, west.
Oh, okay.
So we have, right now, if you were upstairs looking out, it would be actually science classrooms with all the windows in the parking lot. And the other side of the hallway is the math room, so that'd just extend out the back.
Other questions?
Are North Scott and Davenport same?
No, I would say North Scott, they will always, I shouldn't say always, but very commonly, they will fluctuate ten up, ten down, they kind of just stay pretty stable over the years. Davenport has seen a definite decrease, and I'd say Bettendorf right now is also on a decrease.
Bettendorf's been fixed in housing, but the other two has space to grow, right, so I was wondering.
Yes.
Two specifically.
Yeah, Bettendorf is, um, yes, they're very fixed, and you'd also see that for them, they've been able to sustain their growth. Or their, you know, decreases last year, but they picked up a lot of students from Davenport with what you were talking about before with open enrollment. Uh, so that really kinda helped their numbers this last year.
So where a lot of our growth is coming from is open enrollment and not from?
No, we, remember, we are, we have more open enrolled students going out than coming into our district. Um, but last year, we decreased, we were usually close to over a hundred students in open enrolled difference. But last year, we shrunk that by fifty, so we were only about a fifty difference last year, so we had a lot more students either A, staying or more coming in last year. And that's, when you look at the kindergarten with fifteen, will that be a trend, again, we have to continue to watch that to see what happens.
I'd be curious to know Davenport's numbers, just to see, I didn't, I mean, I see they, they're coming into our district too, but they're going into all the other districts as well, I'd be curious what that looks like.
Yeah, they'll have the students who go to Durant, they'll have a few that go to Muscatine, um, so you can come to that southwest side of the district as well, and then some coming this way.
Other questions?
Dr. Wagle, can I address?
Sure.
Elementary class size.
Yes, you can, go right ahead.
Those numbers came about as, uh, it was a plan, class size initiative in, at the early two thousands, which is like a hundred years ago. It was on the board then, and it came deliberately and slowly. So when people call me and say, oh, well, just add one, I'm like, no, no, we've worked really hard to get to these numbers, so if we do go up. We need to have a plan for what we're gonna do next year, and he's like, oh, God, here she goes. But, uh, no, we didn't come by them by accident, and like my other kids were, uh, treated aside as well.
Yeah, I, I understand the importance of small class size, I was just curious, how long, if it had been increasing in a way we've been doing.
It's not randomly.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It was called class size reduction funds, is what started that whole thing, when you start, yep.
Any other questions?
So I would say real quick going through, when you look at, the question really was Debbie mentioned, is when do you add the classroom, what does that look like? Um, what year is it, and how do you address those? I think the other thing I would say is, open enrollment is one of those fine lines of when do you accept it, when do you say we don't have room? Because there's always a day when you look at open enrollment, say, it's important to have that also from a growth standpoint. So when you turn open enrollment away, you have to be very careful, cuz already setting a pattern that could decrease after that.
Yes, go right ahead.
I'm Lisa Lammers, um, we're the co-presidents of P V A, and I know the teachers have really appreciated over the years that our district has stuck to those numbers pretty. Pretty much, every once in a while, there's an exception where someone moves in mid-year and there's a sibling and they don't wanna separate him and we go up one student. But for the most part, P V has been very respectful of keeping to those numbers, and it makes a huge difference for a teacher. So it makes me a little bit nervous to see like, I'll add one on to second grade, because. Those kids, our primary kids are the ones who've been the most greatly affected by COVID. You know, so those incoming second graders would have had, missed part of their kindergarten experience, part of their preschool experience. And so I would like you guys to consider, you know, I hate to turn down open enrollments and there's always the sibling issues and everything. But if we are taking on additional open enrollments, we would get money for each child, so to look very carefully at the numbers. And if we can add another teacher, instead of pushing those second grades over. If we could add another teacher and keep those numbers even under a little bit, it would make a big difference in those kids' education.
And Lisa's accurate in that, there is no doubt about it, and that's where you only tend to see this in times of when we're growing. That this can happen, as, as Debbie mentioned, we've seen it before at kindergarten, um, and you get to a point where, okay. You've added, let's say you've added ten additional kids in a grade level across, you say, okay, the next year, now we know we've got those ten. Plus another year, now let's add the teacher at that point, because now you potentially have a class of ten plus or twenty kids. So you have to watch, she's got, when's that time you say, let's add the teacher, or let's wait a year, because we add the teacher now. What's the class size gonna be, super small and how do you feel, so that's, that's what we are watching now, just wanted to make sure all of you are aware of what this looks like and the decisions we'll make here in the next month.
I, I think you make, you made a good point of that, the fact that unlike other years, we do have to take into account, we made the decision with the COVID factor and what happened with that. And so our threshold may be a little bit different given the circumstances that we've been with the last couple of years, is what it seems like, so. Great, any other questions? I mean, it's always tough to, to deal with these enrollment issues, but again, we are fortunate in this state that we happen to be in a growing district other than in a contracting district. Cuz those are most, sometimes more difficult problems to handle, so. Okay, there's no required motion on that, and that ends the public part of this meeting, we are going to go into the executive session now, so thank you all for coming.